After the call, we'll call the meetings. Board of Commissioners and Codish, would you please lead us in an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today with a spirit of community and service. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we discuss the matters at hand. Grant us the ability to work together in harmony, respecting each other's perspectives and ideas. May our decisions reflect justice, compassion, and a commitment to the common good. Bless this meeting and all who are present. May our efforts contribute to the betterment of our county. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Postle. Order of business is the approval of the May 2nd minutes.
Move to approve.
The second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Treasurers report.
Morning. Following payments were reported to the Treasurer's office with accounts payable with $735,418.03. Payable for the period was $346,333.68. Nom on one account had ten checks and two EFTs totaling $45,003.81. LEPC had a check for $226.58. And finally, CDBG had one check for $2,011 even.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So do.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, continue down here.
Treasurer's report for the period starting 5/1 and ending 5/14/2024. General account has a starting balance of $766,378.47. Total debits of $4,201,887.58, leaving us with an ending balance for the period of $3,877,218.46. Finally, capital reserve account ended with a balance of $16,107,341.50.
Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' report?
So do.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Meeting's in advance. I gave the list to the Chief clerk for inclusion. Commissioner Wise, anything important?
Yeah, I attended the United Way fundraiser golf tournament in the rain. It was all about a lot of people stayed and contributed to it. And Chief clerk has rest in my event.
Great, thank you. Mr. Coats.
I gave my list to Chief clerk, and I'd also like Logan Carter Lane and Ava Libagat from MCTV here today. Thank you for filming for us.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. I mean, comment by the public. Seeing none, hearing none, so continue. The new business, the first order of business is a proclamation for PA 529, Commitment to College and Career Savings in Mifflin County. I will read the proclamation. Whereas Mifflin County Commissioners believe that financial planning is the first step to ensure a brighter future for Mifflin County's children and families, and should have a plan for college and career training. And whereas employers have a responsibility to ensure that they are supporting employees with children by implementing new policies and reviewing and updating existing ones. And whereas children with a college and career savings are more likely to attend college or gain experience in the trade, promoting economic growth and making communities stronger. And whereas the Pennsylvania Treasury Department administers the PA 529 savings program for families with children, providing a way for individuals to save tax-free for college and careers. And whereas at no cost, employers can help empower employees with children by providing awareness of PA 529 and facilitating automatic payroll deductions to employees' PA 529 accounts. Now therefore be resolved that the Mifflin County Board of Commissioners is partnering with the Pennsylvania Treasury Department to promote financial planning for college and career training. And will, number one, make the PA 529 program known to all county employees and offer each the ability to contribute to PA 529 accounts via payroll deductions. And two, set precedent for other employers in Mifflin County, thus encouraging them to follow this example by offering the same consideration to their employees. Proclaimed as 16th day of May 2024, Mifflin County Commissioners Postal, Codish, and Wise. A motion to adopt the proclamation.
So do.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have this morning a representative from the PA Treasury Department, Mr. Booker. Would you like to say your name, please, please?
Just for the record, it's Larry. Good morning, everybody. My name is Larry, the Relationship Manager at the Treasury Department Treasurer, after Treasurer Gary. And I want to thank the Commissioners for having invited us up to speak today. I'm talking about debt a little bit. I'm sure everybody in this room has it. Y'all got it, credit card, mortgage, student loans. You know, sometimes debt is a necessity, right? You've got to take it on to achieve our goal. But quickly it can become an anchor, you know, stopping us from having the money that we need today. And that's why PA 529 exists. It's a savings plan that allows you to save for not only college, but also career training. So, you know, kid wants to become a laborer, use it for that as well, also K through 12 expenses. It's a lot that you could do with a 529 account. Me myself, I live in Carlisle, about an hour down the road. City looks a lot like Lewis Town, a small rural community. You know, a lot of people in my city are struggling right now, you know, since it's tough times for a lot of us. And, you know, the first question I get asked is, Larry, what if my kid doesn't go to school? Well, understand first and foremost, PA 529 is a savings account. It's always your money, do whatever you want to. But anytime you can pull it out, emergencies come up, you decide you want to save a different way, then always close the balance of the account. But, you know, every dollar that you can save is a dollar that you don't have to borrow tomorrow. And I talk, when I talk to my neighbors, you know, same conversation, Larry, I don't have that much. You know, what if I can only do $50, $25, $10? How's that going to help? Once again, every dollar you save is a dollar you don't have to borrow tomorrow. And with that, you know, $25 a month with a 5% return, after 18 years, you have over $10,000. So every little bit that you can put in, it helps.
And Larry, can you explain the tax credit advantages of this? Because I think Pennsylvania, 529, have an account, which I have, for my grandkids. There's a credit off of Pennsylvania.
Correct, correct. So contributions of PA state tax deductible up to $18,000 per person per year. And that's not just you yourself, person in parent's account. Friends, family can contribute. Anybody who puts in money is eligible for that tax deduction. I have a seven-year-old daughter. I also, like Commissioner Postal, have an account. Birthdays, holidays, I ask people, send them three gifts, just get one. And I value those $20 into my donor savings, into, you know, the kid's savings account. But, um, yeah, it's important stuff. I can't stress the importance of financial planning enough. You know, with my, you know, sometimes I look at my budget and I'm thinking, how can I do this? How can I continue to do it? But when I think about it, I think about that little girl's future, I always come to the same conclusion. How can I not? How can I not prepare her for the future? How can I not do everything in my power to get her off to a better start than I had? You know, I come from humble beginnings. My parents didn't have a college and career savings plan for me. When I got to school, I took out the big loans. I'm still paying on them now today, you know, and I want to set my kid up with a better future and encourage all of Mifflin County to set your kids up with a better future, you know. My, uh, and my great-grandparents, nothing bad to say there, raised very well. But sometimes I think if my mom would just put $5 a month away, thirty-six, see about how much we have now. And my best friend, he's an electrician, owns a very successful electric company. When he was getting his apprenticeship with the union, he had to take out big loans to buy supplies, you know, to buy his truck. What if his parents had put $5 a month away? Could have started off without that burden on his back. So it's important stuff.
When the Pennsylvania Department of Treasurer contacted us, and we had a presentation prior to this meeting, and asked us to participate in this, of course, first thing we ask is, well, what is it going to cost us? And there is no cost. So after this meeting, I understand you'll be meeting with some staff to set up the opportunity for anybody to voluntarily sign up for a payroll deduction. And I assume that if there are other companies, like maybe the hospital already has, or the school district or something, if not, you would be available to provide the assistance on how to set this up.
Certainly, certainly. And you can, the payroll's real easy. It's not having a burden for any human resources or anything like that. Send the money to the bank account for it. But, um, yeah, Commissioners, I sincerely thank you, you know, for your leadership, for setting the example here and empowering your community by offering this. You know, you guys clearly committed to your employees and their families. And, you know, I don't know who Commissioner Postal personally, and we only met once. I don't know, you know, their background, church they go to, but I can guarantee those three are committed to doing everything they can to help Mifflin County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Codish, any questions or comments?
I use the PA 529 for both my daughters, which is great for me. It was nice when they got, met two in school once there for a while. The tuition bill came, I could reach the 529, have that paid. You could buy your credits at today's prices, and that holds forever. I did have one question. I have grandchildren out of state, New York State. Can I still have an account for them in PA 529, or how's that work?
You sure can. So we have two different plans, one's your more traditional investment plan. With that one, there's no residency requirement because of anywhere. With the plan you were referring to before, the one where you earn based on how much tuition's going up by, either the owner, which would be you, or the kid has to be a resident of PA. So you could set up an account for that out-of-state child today for either plan.
For either.
For the investment plan or the one that's a little less risky where you're earning based on how much tuition's going up by.
That would be in his name, though, correct?
Yeah, so either the owner who sets it up, or the beneficiary, the student, has to be a PA resident with that plan. So Commissioner Codish is good to go with that one. And then once again, the investment plan, there's no residency requirement.
Is there, is there any penalty or anything for like an early withdrawal or any?
Yeah, so there are the tax benefits, like Commissioner Postal pointed out, there's that. If you wind up taking the money out for something, non-education, non-college career training, it kind of turns into a traditional investment where you got your capital gains tax, your state taxes, federal taxes on it. But you never pay taxes on the money you put in because it's coming in post-tax. And if, because it's not the state's money because you saved it, it's your money. I've had to take non-qualified withdrawals before, you know, you just pay your taxes like if you went to your bank and you opened up an investment account.
Anything else, or just anything else? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
On the agenda, we have Warden Dramonic to report on Mifflin County Correctional Facility inspection. That is just the current.
So we have our Title 37 audit by the PA Department of Corrections on February 21st, and we received our notification that we are in full compliance. And as we are in full compliance, our next inspection will not be until 2026. So I just wanted to thank all the staff at the Correctional Facility. This is a direct reflection on them and their work that they do every day, day in, day out. And I did bring a couple of staff with us that we always try to exceed standards and just not meet standards. And Officer Mitchell and Nurse Price were two people that really helped us out getting ready for Title 37. Again, it was a team effort by all staff, all departments at the jail, but I would like to recognize those two.
And, and, too, but I do, before I leave, I want to read from this letter that we received. Says, "Warden Jason Dramonic and the Mifflin County Correctional Facility staff deserve credit for their efforts in operating this facility in accordance with the statewide correctional standards. Staff at the Mifflin County Correctional Facility should be proud of their accomplishments and are encouraged to maintain this level of compliance. Due to the Mifflin County Correctional Facility meeting or exceeding Title 37, the facility is granted a biannual inspection cycle, so we don't need to have an annual inspection because of the good work that the staff are doing and their leadership." And this letter comes from the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections after that was done. So I do want to acknowledge that and read that. And I think, again, can we get a picture of your staff out there up in the lobby? All right, rest of the business. Request for exoneration of 2023 delinquent real estate taxes and relieve Kathy Whitzel from collecting this tax. This mobile home is removed from this parcel. Motion to approve or disapprove?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrots. Request for exoneration of 2024 county portion of per capita taxes. We lay town borough tax collector has seven, county head of terrorist tax collector has five. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll say. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's a request for refund of a portion of county real estate taxes. Parceling in Granville Township due to a fire damage, $49.84. A parcel in Derby Township, there was an error in the square footage of the house for, since 2019 to 2024, that's $1,553.22. And a parcel in Armah Township, which was an error in the acreage, for $343.81. So a motion to approve this exoneration.
Motion, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll have Public Defender Sean Curry. Sean, this is on the Indigent Defense Grant application. It's a new program that has been approved in Pennsylvania. All the counties are getting some money. What are we doing with that?
Thank you, Commissioner Postal. Right now, we have three objectives that we're currently working through pursuant to the grant. We have compiled data with the help of court administration and the Commissioner's office, so thank you for that. It's given us a good snapshot of the caseload that we've been carrying over time, and specifically last year. The volume has been increasing annually, specifically at the Court of Common Police level. I think last year, I personally took on 345 cases at the Court of Common Police level. That means that those cases did not make it beyond the Magisterial District Judge. The cases that didn't get there are not accounted for in that number. I also handle all of the driving under suspension cases where people are facing jail time in the Magisterial District Court level, predominantly all of the revocations, as well as most of the juvenile cases. Our total volume last year exceeded 500, and we're doing good work with that. I think what we see this as an opportunity to do is expand our resources to more efficiently and effectively serve the people that we help that are financially underserved. That's not to suggest that we don't believe that we're doing an effective job. We do. And it's not to suggest that we don't believe that the Commissioners and the county have not been responsive to our needs. They have been. They've worked with us throughout my start here. About two years and five months ago, when I came in, my staff, so I'm the chief public defender, which makes me the chief myself. I'm the only public defender in our office. We have one support staff. When I started here, that was, our support staff was part-time. But for the last two years, she's been to full-time, and we appreciate that. But more is needed, and that's not to suggest, again, that the Commissioners are not working with us to help provide the necessary resources, but to highlight the fact that this Indigent Defense Grant is needed, and we intend to utilize it in a meaningful way. So that's just to provide context and background in terms of our objectives. One, we do not have a case management software system in our office, so we look to purchase that. That should help us in terms of more quickly identifying any potential conflicts, communicating with our clients, and having the information that both Marissa, who works in our office with me as our paralegal and ink office coordinator, is her title at this point, to prepare in the manner in which we do to best serve our clients. Second, I'm looking at adding an additional part-time staff. Preliminary, I think it would be titled something like as a case manager intake specialist. That person would be tasked with assisting us in implementing, implementing the new case management software. I think at the ground level, when cases come in, basically, the cases are initiated through the Magisterial District Judge's office with the filings of the criminal complaint. We have those, followed by public defender applications that need to be reviewed. I think that they would, that additional support staff would assist us in expediting that process and acquiring additional information that may not always be captured in the public defender application. Sometimes people don't complete fully, and the application is just there for what is the tenant. Just, I guess, by way of background, what we do currently is the qualification for public defender representation is based on manual federal poverty guidelines. The Pennsylvania Public Defenders Association released a memorandum where they recommend that we do 150% of that, which was not what was being done when I initially came into office. We have implemented that, and we are doing that. So our primary focus in determining eligibility is focused on that. But I think with additional support staff, we would be able to acquire additional background information that is not always available to us at the early stages. You know, when I came, when I was offered the opportunity to come here, which I am grateful, ever dead still, you know, people ask me what I do. You're the public defender. Some people think I'm not a real lawyer. I don't identify as a lawyer. If people ask me, and sincerely want to know what I do, or what we do in our office, we help people. So what our objective is, is not just to, you know, help them with their criminal case, but most of the people that we deal with present, the majority of people, present mental health and drug and alcohol issues. And that's largely from a lack of stability in their lives from childhood forward. So we would like to utilize this position, hopefully in a way that will identify those, some areas of instability. We already work very well with tri-county drug and alcohol at the early stages, particularly for people with people that are incarcerated. It becomes more difficult with people that are not incarcerated because the people that are incarcerated are right there, right? I can get to them, tri-county can get to them. There aren't a lot of logistics involved, so that's helpful. We began to coordinate our efforts more recently with SAMAC on mental health issues. We have been attempting to direct more people to career link, to assist them in, you know, obtaining employment and adding stability to their lives. So I think if this position would allow us to capture more of that information in early stage, begin to implement that sooner, and when I'm spending 95% of my time in court, and Marissa's spending 95% of her time just making sure I need to, I know where I'm supposed to be, this individual could help us direct people more efficiently and effectively to those resources so that we can help them in the most meaningful way possible. You know, a lot of times, you know, again, when people ask me what they do, I think there's a lot of stigmatize, you know, being charged as a defendant in a crime, it can be stigmatizing, dehumanizing, and kind of the people are lost in the process. And I think the knee-jerk reaction is, you know, just throw them in jail, right? And that's kind of like burying our heads in the sand, really, because there are neighbors. And whether they're in jail for three months, six months, a year, or three years, most of them, they're going to come back and be your neighbors. So if we can identify the appropriate resources, direct them to those resources, and give them the best opportunity to be productive neighbors, that's what we want to do. So that's what we're hoping to do with that position. Lastly, we're looking at adding additional assistance with an attorney, likely an assistant public defender, not on a full-time basis based on, you know, the amount of the grant at this point, but we think it could be a substantial step. So today and tomorrow, my primary objectives are, one, identifying what we specifically think the cost of that case management software are going to be, and then move forward. I think we pretty much clearly identified what we think the expense is going to be for a potential case manager or intake specialist. And then we'll be able to look at what room we have left and what we may be able to do to provide some additional legal assistance by adding, you know, an additional attorney on a more consistent and regular basis. The county has provided us with a conflict attorney, which is very helpful and useful. We're just looking to use this opportunity to expand that, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to do that. Lastly, if it would turn out that there is any additional room, what we would probably look at doing, I've seen other counties discuss this, is determine what that number is, and then loop back around to court administration to see if we may be able to add something to the hourly rates that are being provided to our court-appointed counsel in order to, you know, reward them for what they're doing to assist our county in helping, you know, people that have been accused of crimes.
Well, thank you. And just for the record, the amount here is $111,973, is what the application is. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Sean. Sean, your caseload, you said you've been here, what, two years?
Yeah, almost two and a half.
How, how, what kind of increase would you say from then to now?
I mean, in Court of Common Police, I think it's probably been about 100 a year. So we, you know, coming at, COVID impacted the caseload, right? So I think that, you know, that's part of what we're seeing in the increased numbers. I think it's enforcement as well. I think both local and state law enforcement are running different initiatives in the caseload, which in raw numbers is a significant disparity. It would be, well, probably like 345 to 65 cases. So, and I think that's just important to point out because, you know, I think the question without understanding that fully, well, why aren't, you know, why don't you utilize them more? Well, if you see the disparity in the raw numbers, you'd recognize that probably three to five more cases is what we're working in with that 5% differential. So I'm trying to do my best to honor the contract, but use that individual in the most effective way and efficient way that we can, you know, under the circumstances. And it's a help, but I think this will help more. And I think the grant recognizes the disparity in spending and the limitations on counties, right? This is a lot for the county to single-handedly put a bill and an expense for our office. But when you look at our office in comparison to the district attorney's office, I mean, it's just me and a single support staff, you know, and a conflict counsel that's handling 65 cases annually. They have a full-time district attorney, two assistants, three full-time support staff, and one part-time support staff. You know, we go into a courtroom in my last trial, and, you know, there were, it's me with a pen sitting at the table next to my client. You know, the district attorney had probably 15 state police working on the investigation, multiple, you know, county law enforcement agencies. So, you know, it's not quite a level playing field. We don't expect a level playing field. When I took this job, I knew what it was, and I don't shy away from that, and I won't. But we're grateful for this opportunity. We're doing our best to utilize it in the best way possible to best serve our community.
Do you, like, your relationship with, like, tri-county?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you, or can you have access to, like, some of their counseling or?
Yeah, we, so, I mean, we do. Um, we have a great relationship with Tri-County, actually, so, um, and it's efficient. Um, I have one specific contact, uh, that for anybody in jail, if I identify a person that need, that I believe may be appropriate for rehab and needs a drug and alcohol assessment, I just shoot her an email. Um, she, you know, is there once or twice weekly, um, depending on her schedule. And as soon as she can work that person in, um, she will do that. And just in terms of the efficiency of our office and what we do with what we have now, for example, if I have an individual that comes into central court, which is our, uh, initial hearing stage, and we've identified that this person, uh, there has a drug and alcohol, uh, issue that may be appropriate for rehab, um, then we'll negotiate that potentially into an agreement. I will request the assessment. The assessment will be completed. That person that is sitting in jail could have their next court date six weeks out. But within a week, if I have an assessment that this individual scores for rehab, within the next week, I could have them in front of the court, pled out into rehab. So, you know, this isn't a, a singular focus that we're doing. Um, and it's not something that's just impacting our office. Um, obviously, we're trying to do it in a way that benefits the community, but it, it's affecting other departments, right? It's reducing the Commonwealth's caseload. It's reducing our prison population. It's giving people the services that they need. Um, and a lot of times, those are individuals that may, you know, could've sat in our jails for even a more extended period of time because they aren't gonna have a good home plan. But now that we got them to rehab, they're gonna go to the halfway house and they're gonna have an established home plan. So, you know, we, we, we are seeing the big picture in this and we're continuously, um, trying to work hard to implement plans and we're willing to adjust, um, to do the best job possible. And we think that these resources, uh, that are being provided will allow us to take the ne- next step towards, you know, our, our real objectives.
County Commissioners Association has been pushing for this for many years. And has pushed it through with the new governor. Anything else?
Well, Sean, I just wanna thank you for your extreme amount of dedication and commitment to our county. Uh, it's, it's been noted, all the hard work you do that, for your clients, and you give them excellent representation. And, uh, you deserve a lot of credit for all the number of the sheer volume you have to handle. And you give every person the time that they deserve. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know if I had a motion. Did I have a motion? Okay. I need a motion then to apply for the indigent defense grant applicant, uh, grant program for one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I make that motion. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Through continued support of the Commissioner's office, everybody that works within your office and within our courthouse community is all. Um, I'm grateful to be able to work with people here every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a sub-recipient agreement with Geisinger Clinic on behalf of Geisinger School of Nursing. You know, Commissioners awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant to them for funding to support the purchase of new SIM software, hardware, provide nursing students with the best and safest training methodology available. Uh, the grant agreement is a hundred thousand dollars and it will terminate December thirty-first of this year. It's on a reimbursable, uh, terms and conditions. And at wave tomorrow is the ribbon cutting toward the new facility of the Geisinger tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, so we expect, and since this is reimbursement and the school is opening, so I guess, uh, they'll be applying, they'll be submitting for this money shortly.
Great.
Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jim.
Welcome.
Personnel items, we have a hiring of Tyson Mueller for probation officer effective May twentieth. Resignation of Corrections Officer Joshua Varga effective May sixth. Resignation of Corrections Officer Garrett Nichols effective May twenty-third. Transfer of Kalima Matt from a full-time to part-time corrections officer effective May nineteenth. Hiring of Kyderine Cameron Rose and Deborah Varga for part-time correction officers effective May twenty-eighth. Promotion of Trenton Kaufman and Lauren Spees from part-time to full-time correction officers effective May nineteenth. And promotion of Wyatt Henry from part-time to full-time correction officer effective May twenty-sixth. And the motion to approve these personnel items.
Motion second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda is completed. Meeting adjourned.